Will the House please come to water? Members, staff and guests, please rise and direct your attention to the dius where Father Galasso will lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Almighty Father, bless us this day as we come together in this special session that was called by the Governor to deal with the effects of the economic crisis on the state budget. Help us to be attentive to these matters for the good of our people. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Would Representative Michael Karen please come to the dius and lead us in the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to have Kayla Harris come forward to sing our National Anthem. If you would just please rise.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, O'er the ramparts we hatched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's brake glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Beautiful job. Kayla Harris is a Milford resident, went to my grammar school, and would you mind if I tell you the story of why she's here? Would you mind? Well, let me tell you why. On Veterans Day, Mayor Ricciutelli, who is a wonderful mayor from my town, had brought Kayla up to sing the Star-Spangled Banner. And through the rush of the day and all the confusion, the mayor forgot to call upon Kayla. So we thought it was a little embarrassing for the mayor, and he felt so bad that we thought we'd give her an opportunity to come up and sing today. So that's why we have Kayla here, and it was well worth it. So thank you for your indulgence. Representative Jenga?
It's my pleasure now to introduce a group from East Hartford, a group of students in the AmeriCAN program within the high school and their instructors, Gene Riley and Joe Riley. They're here today to visit the legislature and see what real action is like. So if you guys would stand up, please let the Assembly recognize you.
Thank you. Representative Caffaro and myself, and very bipartisan with some other legislators in here, believe in AmeriCAN a lot, and we're glad to see the program going forward. We're very proud of your involvement, and these young people are going to be out having some fundraisers, raising money for the homeless and for making sure people have heating oil and all those other wonderful things. As a community, we should be doing for each other in these very difficult times ahead. So again, let's encourage them with another round of applause, and we're so glad you're with us today. Thank you so much, guys. Okay, let's get down to business. Would the clerk please read the call of the special session? We will now have the clerk read the proclamation from the Governor.
By our Excellency M. Jody Rell, Governor, a proclamation. Whereas the economy of the United States is experiencing tumultuous and unprecedented instability, and whereas this instability has impacted on all aspects of our state economy, including families, businesses large and small, and state municipal governments, and whereas state revenues are declining even as demand for state services is increasing, and whereas although I have already taken steps to trim state spending, we still face a deficit of more than $302 million in the current fiscal year's budget, and whereas I have proposed a deficit mitigation plan that will address our projected shortfall without imposing new taxes, using the resources of the rainy day fund or laying off state employees, and whereas municipalities throughout the state are also experiencing difficulties funding their operations and financing their debt, and whereas prompt action by the General Assembly is necessary to enact portions of my deficit mitigation program to bring our expenditures in line with our revenues and to provide relief to municipalities. Now therefore, by the authority vested in me under Article III of the Amendments to the Constitution of Connecticut and Section 2-7 of the Connecticut General Statutes, I, in order to preserve orderly and decent government, do hereby convene the General Assembly in special session in Hartford on Monday, November 24, 2008, at 10:00 a.m., to enact legislation necessary to implement the deficit mitigation plan that I have proposed, to authorize the Department of Administrative Services to do bulk purchasing for commodities on behalf of municipalities if significant savings can be realized, to allow municipalities to renew outstanding bond anticipation notes for a maximum of 10 years, to authorize municipalities to enact an optional tax amnesty program, and to tighten the deadlines related to municipal binding arbitration. Given under my hand and seal of the State at the City of Hartford this 28th day of October in the year of our Lord 2008 and of the Independence of the United States 232, M. Jody Rell, Governor.
Okay, I order the call to be table for the calendar, right? Table for the calendar and printing.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the chamber. At this point, I will soon call for a recess, but before that, I'd like to make an announcement that there will be a caucus of House Democrats in Room 207.
Representative Caffaro.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, for purposes of announcement, upon recess, the House Republicans will be caucusing in Room 209.
Thank you, sir, for that. Representative Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, at this point, I also would like to congratulate Kayla Harris for her wonderful rendition of the Star-Spangled Banner. And with that, Mr. Speaker, I move a recess subject to the call of the chair.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Speaker. Okay, the motion to recess subject to the call of the chair is your objection. A hearing on the House recess subject to the call of the chair. Will the House please come to water? Representative Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the chamber, we are in a special session at this time, and we will soon adjourn this special session and then reconvene the August 22 special session, which will begin the business of dealing with the items we're here for today. So just so when you hear me calling for adjourned, I'm not finishing our business for today, we're just going to move on to another session, and then we'll have a call for another session through that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And with that, Mr. Speaker, I move adjourned subject to the call of the chair.
Motion adjourned subject to the call of the chair. Is there objection? Here and there, sir. House stands adjourned. All right, will the House please come to water? The August 22, 2008 special session of the House of Representatives is reconvened. Will the members, staff, guests please rise, direct your attention to the dius where Deputy Chaplain Garland Higgins will lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. O Holy Spirit, we pray for our members of the Connecticut General Assembly today, the staff and all of those who are appointed to guard our political welfare, that they may be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge the duties of their respective areas with honesty and ability. Your word says that what is required of us is to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with our God.
Thank you, Deputy Chaplain Higgins. Would Representative Steve Fontana please come to the dius to lead us in the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First time in 12 years.
Oh, yeah? Cool. I think so, yeah.
Will the clerk please call emergency certified? Wait a minute, before we do that. Are there any announcements or introductions? Okay, then we'll -- sorry, Representative Billups. We'll go right into it then, ladies and gentlemen. Will the clerk please call emergency certified Senate Joint Resolution Number 153?
Senate Joint Resolution Number 153, resolution convening the General Assembly in special session. LCO Number 7024 introduced by Senators Williams and Looney, Representatives Ammon and Donovan.
Representative Donovan.
Mr. Speaker, I move adoption of the resolution.
That's when the chamber's adoption resolution. Will you remark?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, members of the chamber. This is a resolution calling the General Assembly into special session. It deals with the items addressed by the Governor, dealing with budget mitigation as well as certain authorizations for municipalities, and includes in legislation dealing with foreclosure actions and validating municipal referenda, and I urge adoption. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Care to mark further on the resolution before us? Care to mark further? Representative Ammon, do you have your mic on, sir? Okay. Representative Caffaro, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, through you, a question to the Majority Leader.
Proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Through you, Representative Donovan, in the Senate Joint Resolution 153 that's here, lines eight through nine indicate that one of the purposes we're convening is to consider, quote, "a bill solely limited to implementing deficit mitigation measures for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2009." You indicated in your brief description, and maybe it was just a generalization, but that amongst other things, we are going to be dealing with some of the measures the Governor put forth in her deficit mitigation plan. I presume by the language that's here that any measure and/or amendment to a measure would be within the call of the calendar so long as it deals with deficit mitigation for the year ending June 30, 2009. Is that correct? Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, certainly haven't seen any amendment, but certainly if it deals with the budget ending June 30, 2009, that is correct.
Representative Caffaro.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I realize you haven't seen any amendments. We haven't seen any bill either, but I'm sure we'll all learn together. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Care to mark further? Do care to mark further on the resolution before us? If not, staff, guests please come to the House. Members take your seats, and the machine will be open.
The House of Representatives is voting by roll call. Members to the chamber. The House is voting by roll call.
Have all the members voted? If all the members have voted, please check the board and make sure your votes are properly cast. If all the members have voted, the machine will be locked, and the clerk will take a Clerk will announce the tally.
Senate Joint Resolution Number 153, total number voting, 131, necessary for passage of the statute, total number voting, 19.
Resolution is adopted. Representative Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, now that we've passed the call for this special session, I would like to -- I will soon move to adjourn the current session which we're in so we can take up the new session. And with that, Mr. Speaker, I move we adjourn subject to the call of the chair.
Will you adjourn subject to the call of the chair? Is there objection? Is there objection? Hearing none. The House is adjourned subject to the call of the chair. Members, staff, guests, rise. Direct your attention to the dius again, where Deputy Chaplain Higgins will lead us
Let us pray. Spirit of the living God, fall fresh on us. May you grant us your wisdom to serve your people and do what is best for the well-being of our state.
Thank you, Chaplain Higgins. I'd like to have Representative Tony Guerrero come to the dius and lead us in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, clerk, please call House Resolution 601.
House Resolution Number 601, resolution concerning the rules of the House for the November 24 special session 2008. LCO Number 7023 introduced by Representative Donovan.
Representative Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move adoption.
That's what the chamber's adoption resolution. Will you remark?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, members of the chamber. This resolution before us is the standard rules which we use when conducting business here on special session, and I urge adoption.
Sir, care to mark further on the resolution before us? Representative Caffaro.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Question through you to Representative Donovan.
Question, sir. Please prepare, and you may proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Through you, Representative Donovan, I presume that other than maybe dates, these are exactly the rules that we have used in special sessions past. Is that correct? Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Donovan.
Through you, Mr. Speaker, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're welcome. Care to mark further? Care to mark further on the resolution? If not, I'm trying. If not, let me try your minds. All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Clerk, please call House Joint Resolution. Okay, will clerk please call House Joint Resolution 601?
House Joint Resolution Number 601, resolution concerning the joint rules of the November 24 special session 2008, LCO Number 7030, introduced by Representative Donovan and Senator Looney.
President Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move adoption.
Chamber's adoption resolution. Will you mark, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, members of the chamber, this is House Joint Resolution 601. This deals with the rules which we conduct ourselves, as well as the Senate in dealing with the issues before us in this special session, and I move adoption.
Thank you, sir. Care to mark further on the resolution for Representative Caffaro?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Question through you to Representative Donovan.
Question, sir. Please prepare, and you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Through you, Representative Donovan, I presume that other than dates, these joint rules are identical to the joint rules of special sessions past. Is that correct? Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Donovan.
Through you, Mr. Speaker, that is correct.
Representative Caffaro.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Care to mark further on the resolution before us? Care to mark further? If not, let me try our minds. All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Resolution is adopted. Clerk, please call House Joint Resolution 602.
House Joint Resolution Number 602, resolution concerning the expenses of the November 24 special session 2008, LCO Number 7027, introduced by Representative Donovan and Senator Looney.
Representative Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move adoption.
Question, chamber. Is adoption resolution? Will you mark?
Mr. Speaker, the resolution before us is self-explanatory, and I urge adoption.
Thank you, sir. Care to mark further? Care to mark further on the resolution before us? Care to mark further? If not, let me try our minds. All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Clerk, please call House Joint Resolution 603.
House Joint Resolution Number 603, resolution concerning the printing of the journals of the Senate and House of Representatives for the November 24 special session 2008, LCO Number 7026, introduced by Representative Donovan and Senator Looney.
Representative Donovan.
Mr. Speaker, I move adoption.
Question, chamber. Will you mark, sir?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, once again, this resolution is self-explanatory, and I urge adoption.
Thank you, sir. Care to mark further on the resolution before us? Care to mark further? If not, let me try our minds. All in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. That's it, right?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move for immediate transmit all of House Joint Resolutions Number 601, 602, and 603 to the Senate.
Thank you, sir. Questions on immediate transmit of the House Joint Resolutions 601, 602, and 603? Is there objection? If not, then it's so water. Representative Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, at this point, we are waiting legislation to be before us, and so I move we recess subject to the call of the chair.
Questions on recess? Representative Cafero? Questions on recess, sir? Question on recess, subject to a call of the chair? Rep. Cafero, would you like to say?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Speaker. Pending our, waiting for the receipt of the bill to be acted upon, the House Republicans will have an immediate caucus in Room 209.
Okay, sir. Very good. Care more further? Okay, then we will recess subject to the call of the chair. So you come in session. Session, whatever it is. Clerk, please call emergency certified bill Number 7601.
House Bill 7601, an act concerning deficit mitigation, LCO Number 7065, introduced by Representative Ammon and Senator Williams.
Representative Donovan.
Whoops.
Representative Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would move acceptance and passage of the emergency certified bill.
Okay, so passing the bill. Representative Merrill, you have the floor, Madam.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. We're here this evening to act on a plan that was presented to us by the governor several months ago, and this act that we are passing tonight, hopefully, will go some distance toward mitigating the deficit that has become more and more apparent in our state budget. This bill impacts only the current fiscal year, '09, and seeks to make some changes in the existing budget so that going forward, we can begin to be able to mitigate the deficit that has been coming to our attention in the last few months. We all know that this deficit is more and more a result of some changes at the federal level and things that have been happening in our society across the country and really across the world, and they have had an impact on our state budget, and we feel that although we are not in our regular budget session, that we need to make some changes at this time, as suggested by the governor. The governor's plan actually contained a number of changes to the budget amounting to some $300 million, which was the projected amount of the deficit at the time she developed the plan. Many of the changes that she proposed were able to be accomplished by the executive branch without legislative passage. However, there were some items that we considered that would need legislative approval, and they are contained in this bill this evening. I'll go through the bill briefly, through its sections. Many of the changes are regarding one-time appropriations that were made when we had the occasion of having surpluses in the state, and I will say that over the past four years, we have been blessed with surpluses in our budget. We have filled our rainy day fund to a great extent. We have $1.4 billion in our rainy day fund, and the state has been on a very solid financial footing for a number of years. So this really represents a change that has come on us rather suddenly, and that's one of the reasons we're in special session tonight, is to help react to some of the things that have been going on. If we look at the sections of the budget, you can see that overall, we considered a great number of the governor's proposals in her plan, and actually, our plan and the bill before you will include approximately 85% to 90% of the plan that she put before us to mitigate the approximate $300 million that we need to address tonight. Now, I should say in passing that we do know that since the time this plan was put before us, the deficit estimates have grown, and there's no doubt about that, and the current estimates by both OFA and OPM are really now approaching more a level of around 600 to 700 million. Again, that could change one way or the other, but since we are not in a current session, what we decided to do was try to address the plan that was put before us by the governor and make the changes that we can. We spent many hours going over the items that are in here to ensure that some of the commitments that we made in our existing two-year budget were not being abrogated in some way, and it's very, very difficult to make mid-year changes in any budget, and that's because in a number of cases of the things that were put before us, we found that there were contracts in place, there were commitments that had been made to all kinds of entities, business entities, initiatives that had been put in place during our last sessions that are very important to a number of constituencies, and so we did our best to try to ascertain exactly what savings could be achieved reasonably while maintaining the commitments that we have to existing programs. We also know that we are facing a large deficit in the coming years, and we will certainly do our best to work with the governor to be able to mitigate whatever deficits we might have in '10 and '11, but at the moment, we felt that we could make some changes now that could mitigate the impact of deficits and not spend in some areas where we had been planning to spend. The first section of the budget addresses surplus funds carried forward. These are items that were one-time, mostly one-time issues, one-time programs, money that had been set aside for a number of things and for one reason or another have not yet been spent, so we felt that we could remove some of these items. In most cases, we are following the governor's plan. We made a few changes. We felt that in some cases, for example, in the case of the Clean Diesel Bus Initiative, for example, there were more funds removed from that account than we thought reasonably should be, and we are very committed to this program, which removes the diesel fumes from older school buses for children. I think many of us remember the debates that we had on this item last session, and this was a one-time filter that can be put on existing older buses in order to ensure that our children have healthy air in buses. There were some problems with the implementation of the program, but we still feel that much of this money can and should be expended to ensure the health of the children. It was a one-time cost, so we did add a little bit of money back there. There were also some issues around some of the other programs that the governor proposed, reducing, in some cases, we found that contracts were in place and money had been expended that wasn't accounted for, so we made some adjustments there. I think I will defer now to my colleague, Representative Staples, to talk a little bit about some of the revenue sections of this plan, and I would yield the floor to him, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Staples, you accept the yield, sir?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. May proceed.
Mr. Speaker, regarding the revenue portions of this bill, there are a couple of provisions that are related to revenue. One is a tax amnesty program, which we've proposed and discussed in the past. This would require that the state create a window of time for people who have not come forward to pay state taxes to be able to avoid penalties if they come forward and the window of time that the state provides. It would not allow them to avoid interest payments, although it would provide for a small reduction in interest payments if they paid by a particular date. This is a one-time stream of revenue. It's estimated to bring in about $40 million. We think it's a pretty sensible idea that the governor included in this package. It does not address our long-term revenue needs, and I think that's an important thing to put on the table today, that this package, although it makes one-time reductions in spending and one-time enhancements in revenues, we clearly have some substantial issues facing us next session, both on the spending on the revenue side, and this does not really address any of those long-term difficulties we're facing. The reasoning for that, I think, is that we have to do such an exhaustive look at our revenue system as well as our spending, and next session is the time for that, when we have the opportunity through public hearings and through the committee work to analyze the impact of the severe budget ramifications of cuts and of revenue changes that we may be facing. The other portion of the bill relates to the unclaimed bottle deposits. The bill requires, for the first time, that those receipts be accounted for and be declared publicly on a quarterly basis to the State Department of Environmental Protection. One of the difficulties in determining whether we should collect that revenue is that we don't have any way of measuring what the revenue will be. The estimates that are in the various fiscal notes really are based on, are guesses based on out-of-state receipts, and there are no registered records here in the state of the uncollected deposits. So the bill before us would require that, and the first report of those deposits would be available to us on March 15th of 2009, in time for us to evaluate next session how much revenue is coming to the distributors and allow us to evaluate whether or not we ought to recapture some or all of that revenue on an ongoing basis. That's it, Mr. Speaker, for the two major revenue portions of the bill before us, and I would urge my colleagues to support it.
Care more further? Care more further? Representative Cafero.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the chamber, it's been a few months since we had the opportunity to get together, and a lot has changed since we last met. Many of us stood for election. We watched a historic election take place on November 4th, but about 40 days prior to that time, around the time we last met, our global, our national, and our state economy was rocked to its core. We all know the news. We've watched TV. We've read the newspaper. We've seen the Dow Jones go almost in half. We watch it every day, creep up, shoot down, creep up, shoot down. But those are statistics and numbers. We've also seen some other stuff go down. We've seen our neighbors, our friends, lose their jobs. We've seen some of our seniors panic because the very nest egg that they relied on to live on for the rest of their golden years has in some cases been wiped in half and in some cases been wiped out altogether. We've seen small businesses on our streets and large businesses in our communities close their doors. These are very, very different times. I have been in this chamber concluding 16 years, and I would submit to you that no one in this chamber, no one you know in your life can ever remember the fiscal state of this state being as bad as it is right now. We've heard everyone talk about financial crisis and economic crisis and global crisis. We've heard politicians say it's going to take sacrifice and political will and courage and bipartisanship. Those are all cliches, and I would bet, like many of the people in this chamber, that especially since the election, especially if you stood for reelection and won, at some point in the quiet of your study, you said to yourself, "My God, what are we going to do now? How are we going to get out of this mess?" I think for many of us, myself included, it's hard